Good evening and welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Dale Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. Good evening, everyone. I just want to remind you that the governor's mask mandate is still in effect. The board does not condone violations of that mask mandate. Can we please rise for a flag salute? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nicol?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here, again. Can I have a motion, please, for a motion in a second for approval of the December 13, 2021 Board Minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
I'll abstain since I went on here.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
You skipped me twice. I didn't call me for present, and you just didn't call me now.
Yeah, everybody's here tonight.
I missed Mr. Davidson.
Oh, okay. Want to go back to the original roll call? No worries.
I know. Mrs. Hughes is on here twice. That's why I'm not.
Okay, Ms. Spitzer, you want to take a roll call on the motion in a second on the approval of the December 13 minutes?
I apologize.
No worries.
Let's do roll call again, please. Mrs. Blutfeld?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in a second for approval of the December 20, 2021 Board Minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Abstain.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And Dr. Moore, we have student council report. Do we have Alina and Jasmine here?
Yes, so I think Jasmine is not here, but Alina's here. Go ahead.
Hi, Alina. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Alina, and I'm here to give you a report on our school. So as a general note, as of now, Hundred and Central is still utilizing half-days for in-person instruction, since we're currently characterized as the red phase. On January 13th, our career counselors hosted a junior college planning night for students and families. School is closed on the 17th for Martin Luther King's Day, and on January 28th is when the second semester begins. The dates for the ninth and 10th grade play titled Clue were moved and will be on January 28th and 29th. There is one show on the 28th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and two shows on the 29th, first at 2:00 p.m. and then the last one at 7:00. They will be located in the Little Theater, so I think that's why we're not in there today. And also, students are getting ready to select their academic courses for next year. Looking ahead, the student council is planning for our Senior Central event. It is an updated version of the event we used to call Mr. Central, but now girls can participate too. It will be a fun event for the entire senior grade. It is a parody competition where contestants compete for the grand title of Senior Central. We were not able to host this event the last two years, so we are very excited to get back into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina.
Thank you, Alina.
Okay, we have three pieces of correspondence on the agenda, two from Mrs. Sashau from today and one from the Newell family. And Dr. Moore, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So a few things to go through tonight. First, I want to begin with thanks to Mr. Brandt and Mr. Estrada and all of our vice principals and their grade level teams as well for continuing to do excellent work through what has been a difficult school year. Tonight, they're going to offer two state mandated reports. One is our twice annual report on incidents that we file with the student safety data system for the state of New Jersey, and the other is our harassment, intimidation, and bullying annual self-assessment. So, Mr. Brandt, I turn it over to you, and just signal me when you want to put anything up on the screen here.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as Dr. Moore mentioned, the Department of Ed requires that twice a year, we submit certain data into a warehouse and also present here to you, to the board. So what I'm presenting tonight is a brief report on incidences and occurrences that took place during our first report period here, which is July 1st of 2021 through December 31st, now that we've completed that first six months of this this school year. The two main areas that get reported are incidents that take place, for example, on school grounds, under the umbrella of violence, vandalism, weapons offenses, and substance offenses. And also, we report harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidences, and they can occur either on or off school grounds. We also have to report any type of HIB training and HIB programs that we have. And this list here is a more detailed list of the types of incidences that we have to report to the State Department of Ed, and these are both kind of encompassing of the two previous slides. As far as harassment, intimidation, and bullying data, in the first six months of this school year, again, going back to July 1st up until this past December 31st, we had 21 HIB investigations, and of those 21, 11 of them, the investigation committee determined that 11 of them were confirmed. And of those 11, they were broken down. Six months ago, there were some questions about the different types, if you would, of HIB violations, and they broke down into these four areas. They add up to 12 out of the 11. That's because one of the incidences actually covered two different areas there, if you And then in the other category of violence vandalism, you can see we had 10 instances of violence to be reported. Under violence, that could be a fight, it could also be a cyber threat, for example, under the umbrella of violence. Vandalism, we had seven instances of vandalism, and that could be some type of damage to the school building, or it could also be theft. We had 25 instances of substance offenses, and in 20 there, parentheses, there was 20 individual students, and there were five students who had multiple occurrences, and then we had one weapons violation in those first six months. This slide covers what we hope to be our interventions that we have in place to help the students, and I firmly believe, you know, students, aside from what we have in the coursework, but involvement in activities and athletics are a great way for students to, you know, steer towards focused and focus positive areas of life. So I do believe that over 100 activities, groups, and athletics teams here that we have, by themselves are great interventions and prevention systems. Our ninth grade health curriculum has very detailed activities and learnings that help to both inform students, but also hopefully serve as a prevention. And I'm not going to read the whole list, but I also want to point out on the bottom there, we obviously still have traditional discipline items, but we try to supplement that, complement that with restorative practices and mental health supports for the students through our SAC counselors, and also outside resources that we have. And then lastly, we take the information that we have from those six months, and we push it towards recommendations and resources that we have here in school. For example, this past year, we added one more security staff person. We have now four full-time security members. We felt that we basically have kind of three campuses, the 910, the 1112, but also in the middle there, we have some exposed buildings in between, so we felt it was important to have that fourth security person. I mentioned earlier, too, just briefly, about the complement that we have to our discipline code with the substance abuse policy. We made substantial changes or enhancements, including more supports for students who violate our substance abuse policy. And then also, all this informs the grade level teams, Mr. Estrada being one of them who leads the 11th grade team. This data and information helps support what they do and inform them moving forward. And also, I'd like to say thank you, too, to the board for supporting us, not only with the extra security personnel, but on the bottom there, you can see the security equipment that we have and systems that we have in place through our IT department and such that help make this a safe place. I'll pass it over now to Mr. Estrada.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Andrew Estrada, I'm the 11th grade vice principal, but I also serve as the district anti-bullying coordinator. I did this presentation for some of the familiar faces that were on the board last year, and it was quite a unique last year or two, as we've dealt with COVID and in-school and out-of-school, half-days, virtual days, and all those fun changes we've been through. And as one might expect, my report for our HIB self-assessment and how we do as a district is going to look a bit small tonight because of the number of cases, we're certainly down last year, we just weren't in school very much. So if you're looking at quantity, you may look at that and be disguised as, wow, they did a great job. And I would love to pat ourselves on the back for that, but the data just simply is smaller, and we would expect that next year when I report back in school now, for that to go back to somewhat of a norm. But let's dive in. What the state asked us to do, as Mr. Brandt alluded to, is to do a self-assessment. We have a school climate team that meets along with the district safety team throughout the year. I have an anti-bullying specialist team who are trained to do the interviews, and combined with student, parent, and staff, we get together and we do a self-score at the end of the year to see how we did according to the rubric that the state provides. So we're reviewing data, policy, and protocols. As you can see on the left there, state provides a 40-page rubric, it's quite extensive, it takes us a bit of time to get through it, but it is, it is for the right reasons to make sure that we're putting in programs and protocols in place to keep our students safe. And the scoring, basically, you're on a scale of zero to three for each section, and the maximum score you can get is a 78, that would be a perfect score. 52 is what you need to meet all requirements, and exceeding all would be at the top of the chart there. And it's broken up into eight core elements, and I'm not going to read them to you there, you can see them on the screen, but basically what they're looking for is, what is the school district doing to provide programs to educate students with the focus on obviously changing behavior and how we treat each other in the building and outside of the building, online? Are we training staff? Are we training students? Are we getting them familiar with current trends? And then looking to take that data and then focus on any areas that we need improvement on. So I'll get to that in a moment. So each slide has two of the elements that we scored. You can see at the bottom of each sort of bullet list there, what meeting the requirement would be, like on the left there, core element number one, meeting the requirement, you need a 10. Our score was a 14. Again, this is a self-score, but it's pretty clear in the rubric, you have to meet these with clear identification, there's not much subjectivity to it. And then again, core element number two requires a six, we scored a nine. Moving right along, our scores at the bottom were 15 and six respectively, you can see the comparison. And just to give you an idea without reading the bullets to you, the staff, core element three, staff instruction and training, what we do during our in-service days, during our faculty meetings, what we send out with videos for support, our online trainings, and then the curriculum and instruction on the HIB is really important for us in terms of the students. That's where I think we see the most impact is through our curriculum, quite honestly, because we get them when they first come in, and we spend a lot of time with our ninth graders. So we even saw some changes this year, mid-year, when we did our presentations early fall, we had some HIBs coming in at a frequent basis, a frequent rate, early. We did all of our trainings in person in the Little Theater, we met with each ninth grade health class, and then immediately, we saw what was being reported got more accurate, so the kids were more clear on what should be reported and what should not be, and the behavior changed amongst our ninth grade students, which was nice to see, immediate Core element number five is the HIB personnel, so of course, we focus in on our training and our, one of our more recent goals, and I want to thank Dr. Zorowiki for this, for our head of our counseling, she's making it a focus to train more of our counselors to be trained anti-bullying specialists. And so that takes time and money to do that, and it kind of spreads the wealth a little bit in terms of the expectations of time on our staff, so not one or two people are so pressed with their time, but we can spread the responsibility. So we focus in on having a large group of personnel who know what they're doing and are well-trained. Number six is self-explanatory. Number seven is, seven and eight here are the last two. The investigation procedure, we score that based on a state requirement, that is laid out as specific as it will ever get. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that we have a process we must follow with regards to when the report comes in, must be filed with a verbal report to the principal, we then have 10 school days to complete that investigation with the ABS team, they report out to me as the anti-bullying coordinator. I get a final investigation report to go to the principal, the superintendent, and then you, the board, and that's when you hear about it at your board meetings. So that process, really, what we're scoring there is, are we doing a good job of following that process? And then the last one is our actual reporting in terms of what we do to our local board, as well as the state level. So 2020, 21 was, like I mentioned, a bit unique year. We had about midway down on the left-hand side there, you see, investigations completed were nine, which is wonderful, we didn't even hit double digits. A lot of the kids really just weren't around each other very much, and when they were, it was for a half-day, it was a very unique time where we had just hit in March of 20, the first, you know, kind of going home of, with dealing with COVID. And so it was a little bit of an awkward time for students, they weren't really sure how to interact with each other and when, so that helped us with regards to conflicts. So nine was the number of cases that we investigated, and three were confirmed to be HIB for the breakdown there, as Mr. Brandt did for you earlier. One was for learning disability, one was for race, and one was for sexual orientation and gender. So three of the nine were confirmed as HIB. The recent history to give you just some context there, 1819 score was a 75, 74 in 1920, and then a 77 last year. Again, 78 would be a perfect score, and just to give you an idea why we didn't get that last little, number one, to give us a 78, is the one section where it speaks to initiation of your of your HIB programs. And so we've instituted, you know, since 2011, we've created the programs, now it's a matter of tweaking, refining, and improving. So we didn't feel like it would be very fair to give us a point in that area each year when we didn't recreate it, we're just sort of sharpening the blades, if you will. So we try to change at least half of the ABS team each year, so this current year, anti-bullying specialists are Mr. Cubbley, Ms. Edgar, Ms. Heller, and Mr. Maldonado. Ms. Heller and Ms. Edgar are the sort of the mainstays on there, or at least recently have been, they're my most consistent two, and then we rotate two in and out, and that's why we needed to focus on training more staff and getting them certified. We're going to start to give them a little break from this process, because it is quite And I would offer you any questions you have on the presentation?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you.
Thank you. So another guest with us tonight, well, not a guest, Mr. Hall, he's not a guest. Mr. Hall tonight, he's one of our talented supervisors and directs the work of our science department, and I'm not sure how we really could have gotten where we are through good times and tough times without folks like Mr. Hall and all of the colleagues that he works with and who work with Mrs. Cangelosi-Hade and Dr. Webb. So, Mr. Hall, I'll get myself ready to help you out, and you go on up and take the podium, and we'll get you all set up here.
I'm Matt Hall, I'm the science supervisor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity tonight to come here and give you an update on the science department, our science program, and the work we've been doing. We've been involved in quite a lot of transitional work over the past five or six years. And sort of looking out at our board, we have some faces that have been part of sort of hearing about the progress work, and we have some new faces. So I thought it might be helpful to start with a little historical context, to prime the work that we've been engaged in, and then where we're headed next. So that's really sort of the layout here. So I wanted to start, not all the way back, we're not going to go all the way back to Thomas Jefferson and that sort of thing, but back to the Reagan era, when the National Commission on Excellence in Education released a landmark report called A Nation at Risk. And really, what this was, was a call to action to Congress about America's education system, and really rang alarm bells that we may be falling behind in terms of international competition, and a focus of this was science and math. You know, the fields that today we call STEM really became a focus because those areas are really important, scientific innovation, engineering, mathematics, really are important for the economic health of the nation. So this was a report that, if you're a student of history and educational history, it was somewhat controversial, but it really did get a lot of things going, right? So NCTM, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, was established, started to establish frameworks for what should be taught in regards to mathematics in schools. The American Association for the Advancement of Science initiated what they called Project 2061, and it was by the year 2061, this is what science education should look like in the United States. And they established, for the first time, benchmarks for scientific literacy, okay? This was in the 90s. The National Research Council developed the National Science Education Standards. So this was really a kickoff for the standards reform movement in the United States. So at the time, in 1983, New Jersey did not have content standards, okay? It wasn't until 1996 that New Jersey adopted content standards for all of the core curriculum areas, and they called them the Core Curriculum Content Standards, sort of a logical name, go New Jersey Department of Education. And what that did was it defined what should be taught in public schools, and public schools are responsible for delivering those content standards. Science was among the standards that were developed and adopted in 1996. And with this sort of reform mindset in the country, there was a lot of focus, and there was a lot of information, a lot of depth, or not depth, but a lot of breadth to the science. This is, for many of us, the type of science education system that we came up when we were in high school, right? And it has been described, often described, as that mile-wide, inch-deep, a lot of content type of program. So those standards served New Jersey well for many years, and they continue to refine and revise and re-adopt content standards on about an every-five-year cycle. And then we'll fast-forward to 2010, when New Jersey adopted, for the first time, a national set of standards, rather than a New Jersey-specific set of standards, and that was the Common Core standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics. And not long after that, the Next Generation Science Standards, as a set of national science education standards. Now, this was a seismic event for science education in the United States and within New Jersey, okay? They were adopted or renamed in 2016, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science, and if you were to compare that set of standards to the Next Generation Science Standards, the only thing you would really find different is the logo at the top of the page. They were pretty much exactly the same. In 2020, they were re-adopted with minimal changes for high school. So we are in that era of Next Generation Science Standards, and the Next Generation Science Standards are quite different than earlier standards, that mile-wide, inch-deep. So how are they different? So the New Jersey, or the Next Generation Science Standards, New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science are really about the nature of science as is practiced and experienced in the real world. So practice, scientific practice, is a big part of that. Scientific practices had been in earlier standards, but often they were taught as more content, and you may remember from your own experiences, things like remembering the steps of the scientific method. The scientific method was a list of things, of steps to be remembered, more so than a skill set to engage in, okay? And so the NGSS sort of challenges that. They're developed around student performance expectations, so not just what does the student know and what can they answer on a test, but what can they apply to new or novel problems? They were designed to have a coherent progression from preschool all the way up through 12th grade, which were based on learning progressions that were age-level appropriate. And that was something that was, that folks were sort of critical about earlier standards. You know, sometimes students would be introduced to concepts at an early age, like electricity, like in 4th grade, before they understood the structure of an atom and electrons and things like that. And it was, it's really a focus on a deeper level of understanding of a narrower focus of content, as well as the application of that content. So a narrowing of that mile-wide idea and a depth of knowledge. Also of note, engineering standards are integrated throughout, and that was a new, a new thing. So not just science, and science as a theoretical body of knowledge to be learned, but also to apply, to solve problems and develop solutions. And of course, I think we've all heard many times the need to prepare students for college, career, and citizenship, okay? The other thing is there was now better alignment between science and other content areas, in particular, English Language Arts and Mathematics. So there was, there was a lot of integration there, which is good. So to be clear, the Next Generation Science Standards are predicated on the belief that the purpose of science instruction and science education is to empower students to make sense of natural phenomena and to solve novel problems using scientific knowledge and principles. And I share this because this is what, as a public school in New Jersey, when we think about what are we trying to accomplish with our science education, our science instruction... about what are we trying to accomplish with our science education, our science instructional program, this is the outcome. This is the purpose, to empower students to make sense of natural phenomena and to solve problems. So it's a student-based, problem-solving, it's an application focus, okay? So then what does that look like here at 100 and Central? So since 2016, we have been changing the way we do our science instructional program. And there have been a lot of changes. So we have developed a more team-based collaborative, what we call professional learning community approach to our department. So our department is organized into teams, and the teams are tasked with solving instructional problems collaboratively, so not individually, not as little independent islands to one another, but as a team to deliver a consistent experience. We had to align our program to the NGSS. It was not beforehand. And when I say program, I mean every aspect of it, the curriculum, the course sequence, the instructional strategies, none of that was NGSS-aligned. So we've been doing a lot of work, there's been a lot of professional learning, discussion, adaptation of instructional materials, pretty much a soup-to-nuts revision of our program. We didn't revise our curriculum, we created new curricula from scratch. We also noticed that our science courses, specifically our environmental science, our biology, our chemistry, and our physics courses, were all pretty much separated from one another. There wasn't a coherence, there weren't through lines in that experience. So that is something when we were designing and redesigning curricula, to have more consistency or coherence across grade levels, as well as consistency in our levels. So in other words, the experience, the philosophy behind the Honors 9th Grade Science Course should be similar to the 10th Grade and the 11th Grade. It all makes sense, but it wasn't in place. So there was work to be done there, and a lot of great conversations about what do those levels even mean? What is the student that we're developing these courses for? What do we want that experience to be like for them? Consistency is one of those things that you're going to see as a theme here, and I know that Dr. Moore has spoken about that on many different occasions, and you probably hear that from the other supervisors when they come here, too. But making sure that there's a consistent experience for students across sections of the same course, and when we say consistency, we're talking about consistency in homework expectations and the amount of homework, the types of things they do, grading, assessment, all of those things are similar, right? And the magic is really, when we have a consistency of experience, there are, there's collaboration within the PLC, but we're not handing a script to our teachers and saying, "We want you to be a robot and follow the script." You know, we do our best to hire the best professionals we have, and we want to take advantage of that expertise. So that's really, I feel like we're in a good place with that now, but that, there was a lot of work to get there. Honors and AP level courses, we've been working to increase access to those courses, and by access, I mean there were all sorts of prerequisites and very specific pathways that students would have to attend to in terms of what courses am I going to take and what sequence to get to our upper-level courses? And we have really been working to streamline those, and for every one of those gates that we put in front of a student to be really, to interrogate them, right? Is this really a wall that we should be putting up? Is it necessary to the success of that student? And is there a way that we can, we can do this in a different way? And one example is our AP Environmental Science Course, which is now a choice for 9th graders. That was one of those courses that prior to this work, students needed to take at least Honors Biology and Honors Chemistry to take AP Environmental Science. So they were juniors. We now have 9th graders who are taking that course and really just blowing it out of the water. It's amazing what they're doing in there, and when we compare their performance to other schools, high-performing schools in the state, it's unbelievable. I have supervisors from other schools calling me all the time, saying, "How are you doing this?" And sometimes they don't even know that they're 9th graders, right? They're like, "How is your average AP Environmental Science score 4.5 out of 5?" And then when we say, "Yeah, by the way, 90% of those students are 9th graders," that's about just being very, very critical about the obstacles that we're putting in front of students, the types of prerequisite knowledge that we're claiming that they need ahead of time, and a lot of that can be taught within the flow of the course. And so that's really been great. Five or six years ago, our AP science performance wasn't where we wanted it to be. And so we've been really working to improve that, and it is, it is much improved. There's still some opportunities to improve it further, and some of those are really running up against our access ideas. So you know, that's the kind of thing we're looking at now. Our Biomedical Science Academy is new, and that's been an exciting and fun project to work on. We're in the second year of it now, the students are doing great, and we're looking forward to year three and what that experience looks like for them next year. Many of these students are engaged in, you know, right now they're starting anatomy. Many of these students would have never taken our anatomy and physiology class, and yet they're in there, they're learning all the bones and muscles and the human body, it's really, it's really fun to see. We've successfully adapted our instructional program throughout the ongoing public health emergency, right? That was a huge lift that we couldn't have done had we not established a lot of these other things, the PLC teams, these common ideas around teaching and learning and the collaboration. So that has been really a huge success. So I have been talking about our course sequence. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I wanted to touch on our course sequence as a look at what does our program look like, okay? So I mentioned before, we are delivering the science standards, the Next Generation Science Standards. Those are really organized around three disciplines. So you have your Earth and Space Science, your Biology/Life Science, and then Physical Science. So there are really three focuses of science, and those sort of go along with the graduation requirements for the state. So when we design a science program, what we need to do is deliver the standards and make sure that that experience is accessible to all of our students, no matter what level or whether they're English Language learners, or they're special education students, or they're in our ASPIRE program, or what have you. All of our students need access to the full breadth of the standards. We also need to make sure that we are providing for them a structure to achieve the graduation requirements in science. And the way those work is, students need 15 credits, but they're specific credits, like clusters of credits. So one cluster of five credits has to be in either Environmental Science, Chemistry, or Physics, okay? A second cluster of five credits has to be in Biology/Life Science. And the third cluster of credits has to be in another lab or inquiry-based science program that is aligned to the standards. So when we look at that, as 9th graders, all of our 9th graders take Environmental and Earth Science. And what that does is that checks that first five-credit box, the Environmental, Chemistry, or Physics box. Our 10th graders all take Biology. That's that second five-credit requirement for Biology. And then in 11th grade, our students really pick between Chemistry or Physics. And most of them frankly take Chemistry. I'm not sure why, I think that's the way it has always sort of been, but they have access to pick Physics as well. And many of them actually take Chemistry as 11th graders, and then as 12th graders, they take Physics. But by going through this sequence, they will hit all of those necessary credits to graduate while at the same time hitting the three main areas of science that the standards are organized around. So that's the, that's the underlying design. And I mention that because, as board members, you probably look at our science program and you say, "Gee, that's a little bit different than I see up the road at North and Voorhees and at Del Val and South and all around." Because many schools, most schools frankly, go Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, high schools. And that satisfies the graduation requirement, but what it doesn't do is address a third of the standards, which are Earth and Space Science, okay? And so that's something that we're doing very intentionally. And the reason for that is because many of our, I don't know what those sister schools and other places, they're still delivering the science program from 1996, okay? That one from, that came out of that Nation at Risk era, okay? So we have sort of gone beyond that at this point. So this is our core science program. In addition to our core program, we have lots of electives, okay? So you'll see the ones with the little stethoscope next to them, those are our biomedical academy electives. You see, we have a variety in 10th, starting in 10th grade, we have a variety of electives that address the Earth and Space Sciences. The reason they're placed there is because all of the students had taken their core foundational classes, 9th graders. Starting in 11th grader, or in 11th grade, we have more Biology-oriented electives opening up. And then in 12th grade, we have a couple that are Physical Science and Nature, Aviation Science and Honors Organic Chemistry. So altogether, we have a very robust science program, 11 core science courses, 13 electives, five different AP courses. We have three courses specifically designed to support our English Language learners, and we have two for our ASPIRE students. So when we look back at our mission as a district and we say, "All means all," our science program is designed to make sure we are providing opportunities and, so core learning opportunities, as well as elective opportunities for everyone. So a little snapshot at enrollment. One of our goals is really, and the reason I share this is, one of our goals is we have different levels. We have a general level for students who need more support. We have a CP College Preparatory Level, which is students college-bound, and we want to make sure that they're college-ready, that's the level. We have honors, it's more rigorous, it goes deeper, more enrichment built in, and we have AP. So our goal is to really sort of have an on-ramp to our science program for all of the 9th graders coming from our sending group, or if they're coming from, you know, out of district or something like that, but also to sort of push them up and have them reach and sort of move up. So one of our goals is to see this, these percentages sort of creep up over time. So a couple of numbers to look at here. If we look at Honors, Environmental, and Earth Science, 27% of our students, and this is this year's data, 27% of our students are taking that. We have another 8% in AP Environmental Science, and then we have our CP level, 44%. And then you have some other sorts of things here, too. If you see a one next to it, like that blue slice to the left, that's a, that's a Special Education Replacement Section. The ones designated ELL are the, that was the English Language Learner Section, and that's really designed at the CP level. And then that orange slice is our general, and that's sitting at 12%. So as we look at Biology and Chemistry, what we hope to see is that the, you know, the higher levels, we see that the number begins to creep up. So we'll look at Biology, and you can see that there's a greater percentage of students in Honors Biology than we saw in the earlier slide. And it's really being pulled out of CP. So we're not seeing the general level push up the way we want, that's an area that we're looking at, but you are seeing the CP level really push up into the Honors and AP more so. So that, this, I would say that's sort of a mixed, a mixed bag in terms of success. Chemistry, you can see, it's a, you know, it's a similar trend, but that slice of orange there is bigger than we want it to be, right? So that's a, that's an area that we're looking at as well. There are less slices of this pie. We do not have this year an ELL Chemistry course, that's something that's in development for next year. So you see that. And then Physics, Physics is a little bit harder to interpret because we don't have a general level of Physics, we start at CP. So I include that one just to be sort of, as a completionist, but it's not really a good comparison. Okay. All right. So how do we deliver this? So let's look at the department by the numbers. So the science department consists of 30 teachers. Partnered with our teachers, we have eight special education co-teachers and two ELL paraprofessionals, which really, the special education co-teachers and the ELL paras, they really are a tremendous resource for our science department. They're fantastic, and you know, we just, we're so grateful to have them supporting our program. In terms of certifications, certification in New Jersey is another one of those things that's an important variable to consider with your program. Because unlike English, or math, or social studies, where there's one certificate, in order to teach a specific science course at the secondary level, you have to hold a specific certificate. So we have, of our 30, half of our teachers are Biology-certified, okay? We have five Chemistry-certified teachers, we have five Earth Science-certified teachers, three Physics, and we're very fortunate to have eight Physical Science-certified teachers. So you're probably asking, "What's the difference between Physical Science and Physics?" So a Physical Science-certificated teacher can teach Physics, Chemistry, or Earth Science. An Earth Science teacher can teach Earth and Space Science courses. A Chemistry teacher can teach Chemistry or Environmental Science. A Biology teacher can teach Biology or Environmental Science, and a Physics teacher can teach Physics or Environmental Science. So when you think back at our program, our 9th grade So when you think back at our program, our ninth-grade course is environmental and earth science, which means that all of our 30 certificates can teach that course. Then our 10th-grade course, our next most sort of enrolled, is biology. And our biology teachers, when we recruit them, they're teaching biology, they're teaching biology electives, they're teaching our biomedical academy, and they're teaching our environmental and earth science courses. And our physical science, we're fortunate because those are the teachers that can sort of pivot between physics and chemistry. So the takeaway from this chart is that we have a lot of flexibility in how we staff. Okay? Which means that, so when enrollment shifts, or when we do our sectioning, we do our sectioning based on student requests and needs, not on saying, hey, we have three sections of this, so we're going to pick three sections worth of students to go there. We're able to flex our staff to cover those, really no matter what happens. So that's, that's really a strength of how our distribution of certificates here. Okay. In terms of educational background, two-thirds of our department has an advanced degree. You know, they have a master's or a doctorate. And many of the eight you see in bachelors are actively working on a master's degree right now. So it is a group of very, very dedicated, very smart, hard-working individuals. So really terrific. I mean, I count myself very, very fortunate to be able to lead the team that we have here. I've worked in some other places, and I will say the 100 and Central Science Department is the best. They're the best that I've worked with, and thank you for your support as a board because it wouldn't be this way without your support. Okay. In terms of years in district, the average is about 10 years. So most of our science teachers have about 10 years of experience. You can look at some different ways of looking at central tendency there, but the takeaway from this is we really have two, we have a bimodal pattern here. We have 25% of our department is new, three-quarters of the department is not, and we have, unfortunately, quite a few of them that are heading towards that retirement side of the chart here. So that's something that we're going to need to watch. And when I get to some of the challenges that we're facing, staffing is number one. That's our number-one challenge. Okay. So priorities. So we talked about the mission of the science department. We talked about the composition of the science department. We talked about how we deliver our science program. So here we are, it's the 2021-22 school year, and we have priorities. So we did a look back at what we've accomplished. Now what are we, what are we looking at next? So first of all, the pandemic has been a huge challenge. Right? But we don't want that to interfere with us. We want to keep moving forward, not step back, not settle back into some of those old practices. And I know that's a theme here at 100 and Central, and we're all very much dedicated to doing that. Leveraging the lessons learned from the last couple of school years to move forward with flexibility, and to continue to, you know, seek that vision that's in the strategic plan. Okay. Another priority, safe return to experiential learning. The NGSS is at its heart a constructivist design. Students learn through experience. Right? That's at the heart of everything we do. And last year, we couldn't do a lot of that. We couldn't do labs, we couldn't do a lot of the collaborative work. So this year, that's a big focus for us. We don't want to fall into habits of, you know, sort of isolated, independent, sort of old-school, you know, book and worksheet kind of things. And so that's, that's a challenge frankly, and it's a focus for us. We also want to return, safe return to student-to-student collaboration. And of course, all the changing quarantine rules and stuff like that have been, you know, that's, that's stuff to navigate. Development and implementation of common benchmarks is a huge focus. And I'm going to get into assessment in just a moment in more depth, to help you sort of understand the work that's happening there. But, you know, needless to say, we're developing common benchmarks for all our science courses that are aligned to the NGSS. And that's, that's a key there. We're also working to improve the staff proficiency in utilizing common assessment data. Okay? Frankly, most of our teachers are used to conducting assessment and looking at assessment in isolation, and not comparing it with one another, and learning from one another. And so that's a sort of a habit that's, that we're working to break. And we really want to particularly focus on utilizing collaborative data, common data collaboratively, to identify any disproportionalities that exist in the performance between various subgroups. Okay? And we're going to look at an example of that in just a moment. Okay. Equity and inclusivity are a huge focus. We tend to think of science as this pure endeavor, a pure discipline, that is sort of separate from, you know, the politics and, you know, it's very objective, there's no subjectivity and things like that. But there, but that's, you know, that's not the reality. Right? There is, there is a perspective that we tend to look at things from, and we want to make sure that the experience is relevant to the students who are learning it. Right? So we need to make sure that there's representation, that students can see science as something that's relevant to their own lives, and see themselves as potentially being scientists or engaging in scientific work. And I won't go through all of these, but there's a lot of things that we're focused on, a lot around relationship building, helping establish student self-efficacy, and, and really sort of analyzing whether or not we have unintentional messaging within our curriculum. One place that we've, we've been really having some great conversations is around talking about genetics. Right? And when you talk about, we tend to talk about mom, here's the mother's genes and the dad's genes, and we're going to do a cross, and maybe being a little more aware of the language being used, and separating biological gender from identity when we talk about that. So challenges. So challenges to moving forward with our priorities. Staffing, I mentioned, is our number-one priority. There, we have just had a terrible time finding folks, and it's not, that's not a phenomenon that is, that is 100 and Central phenomenon. It's, I'm hearing it all across the state. I know it's a national issue. I hear almost daily from colleagues in other districts who have open positions and can't find staff. And we have really had a lot of challenges, staffing, and we, you know, we tend to have pretty stable staff. Right? So even things like maternity leaves or medical leaves, we are just not getting applicants. And that's scary. Disruption stemming from the ongoing public health emergency, that is of course a challenge. Politization of scientific and educational issues. Right? That's a challenge. It's not a new challenge to science. You know, I'm sure you're all aware that things like evolution, topics like evolution, have been controversial, but it tended to be limited to sort of a fringe of folks. And now it's much more common for folks to have other, I guess, other than mainstream ideas about scientific topics and principles. And I mentioned before, assessment, lack of quality and GSS-aligned assessment tools. We really don't have ready-made tools to go to. So what are we going to do about that? So an example of that, in the fall, we did Start Strong. And we have not had a state science assessment in several years. And the last time we had it, it was really a pilot. So we don't have longitudinal data to compare it to, and we really don't, and frankly, the tools that we're seeing are not measuring what the NGSS is telling us we should be teaching. So I share the Start Strong assessment data as an example of that because we administer this test, and this is the kind of stuff we get back. Right? So all of the students, if you look at the top here, let's see if my laser reaches all the way over there. Maybe not. The top left is, that's our ninth-grade Start Strong assessment data, which is intended to measure where the students were with regard to the, at the end of middle school. And we get three basically groups. We get, green is less support, yellow is some support, and red is strong support, but not specifically what do they need support in. 12th grade, we also administered it, and you could see, I guess, that it's a little bit better, there's more green. But also, we're administering this to students who may not even be taking a science course right now. So, so there's really not a vehicle to provide support, even if we knew what it was. So this data, I mentioned, is sort of mostly useless, but there is something that comes out of this that is important and, and we need to know more about. And if you look at the graph in the bottom right-hand side, that's our demographic breakdown. And there's something in here that I just don't like to see. And that is, if you look at the, the shape of the graph, red being strong support, orange being some support, green being less support, if you look at the breakdown of the demographics, the Asian and the white, you see the highest bar is green, the lowest bar is red. But when we look at our black and Hispanic bars, they're the opposite. Right? That's, that's, you know, that's not great. That's alarming. Right? That's something we want to look at and figure out, why does it look like that? So what are we going to do about that? So I mentioned we don't have good assessment data, but I also mentioned earlier that we're developing benchmarks. So what does that look like? And I skipped ahead, I forgot I put this in. This is an individual student report for Start Strong, which gives a little bit more But this is not something that we get a report, we get PDFs to send to families, but we don't get a breakdown of this to even do anything, and it doesn't line up with the curriculum, the content standard. So it's, you know, it's sort of wonky. All right. But I wanted to get to what we are doing instead. So we are currently developing, because there really aren't any out there, NGSS-aligned benchmarks for all of our core courses. And at this point, we have two developed for each of our core courses. And the way we did this was, we developed blueprints for what needed to be taught, and we built the assessments off of that. And so this is an example of what that might look like for our environmental and earth science. We have our major curricular topic, the knowledge comprehension and application details, what standard it is, and the percent weight of the, of this topic on the assessment, and the number of items. And so the teachers built these blueprints, and then they went through, and they further identified level of rigor in terms of web's depth and knowledge model, and then the actual point weight of the test. And once this was all done, then questions started to be developed. Okay? And the way we're doing this is those questions are being loaded into the Linkit, the Linkit platform. And then when we administer these tests, we can break the results down by all of these different components. What's the standard? What's the depth of knowledge level? What's the particular topic? And we can go through, and really in a very granular way, look at student performance. So at this point, we have administered our first benchmark, and we are going through, and we're sort of, you know, doing a baseline setting. We're looking for questions that may be problematic that we need to adjust, but it's really promising, and it's, it's sort of exciting to see. Here's sort of a snapshot of what that might look like, the kind of data that we can get with the platform. So you see the top left is really just a distribution of all of the students together. It looks pretty much like you would expect. For those of you who like statistics, it's a left-skewed curve. You know, that's what you would sort of expect. On the top right, you could see a breakdown by standard, and it color-codes it for us. And then the bottom is an item analysis. And so you can see things like that orange one that jumps out when you look at it. That's a question that way too many students got wrong. And so what we do then is we go back and we look at that item, and we say, why did they get that wrong? Is it the wording? Is it something that the activity is not effective? But it's really giving us a lot of actually useful data to work with. Okay. So we talked about some of our challenges. You know, I think, I thought it would be nice to end on a positive. What are our advantages? We have a lot of assets with regard to the work we do. So first of all, the science department staff is committed to their students. They're absolutely committed to the students and the student experience. That is not a problem for us. I have to say thank you to the board, and thank you to the administration for the support. It is, it's phenomenal, and it, you know, the support that you provide us as a department and as a school is directly related to how we have accomplished as much as we have. So, so thank you. You know, we could not have done this without that support. Our community values science education. Right? This is a community that knows that. You know, we have many, many folks who are, who work in scientific fields, technical fields, things like that, it's valued. It's not a, you know, we don't have problems recruiting students to take science classes, and that's, that's great. So, you know, I'm very grateful to the support we get from the community. And STEM careers are attractive to many students. So that's, that's an asset that, that we enjoy for sure. Okay. So that's a lot. I know, you know, thank you for your patience, and I thought I'd stop there and see if anybody had any questions. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for a very comprehensive report. I do have a number of questions. First, you talked about some dissatisfaction with the AP science program about five years ago. What have you done comprehensively? What was the dissatisfaction, and where are we at now?
So, so how do I phrase this? So the dissatisfaction was communicated to me by the former superintendent, and it was nonspecific. So it was, the AP science scores are bad, and you need to figure out how to fix them. So my questions initially were, well, what should they look like? Right? So the first issue that needed to be resolved was, what's the goal of our AP science program? And so AP programs can have different kinds of goals. Right? There are school districts that have the goal to maximize the mean score. So we want to get as close to five as possible. So we want to get as close to five as possible on the mean score. There are other goals, there are other districts that, that's not the goal. The goal is, we want to maximize enrollment, right? And we want to get as many students as possible to take the AP Science class regardless of how they score. So the first thing that needed to be done was to identify, what's the goal of our program? And I know that seems basic, but it was not something that was, that had been identified, and it wasn't universally sort of accepted by the staff. And so I'll tell you what our goal is, is to maximize the passing rate on the AP test. And so what that means is, one way of thinking about that is, if you were to sort of draw out the scores from zero to five, and enrollment, and you put those on a, on a chart, and you look for the intercept, that's really the intercept, right? We want to have as many students as possible taking our AP Science courses that are also passing the AP Science test. And by passing, I mean getting a three, four, or five on that. So when we look at whether or not we're being successful, that's an indicator that we pay close attention to, is what's our passing rate? And our passing rate frankly is very high on many of our AP tests, on, on all of them. But some of them, it actually may be too high. And because if it's too high, if we're really at that 98% passing rate, it probably means we don't have as many students in the class as could be passing it. And so we look at that as, you know, it's easy to sort of clap your hands and say, awesome, but, you know, those are the things we're looking for. But we didn't have a clear understanding among the staff members about what are we trying to do. So that was one of the things, was establishing, we're trying to get the passing rate. So this isn't about investing in the five kids who are going to get a five. It's recruiting students who have the potential to pass this and supporting them to pass it. So that was part of it. The second thing we did is, I tried to have-
Let me stop you for a second.
Sure.
Why can't we incorporate both goals? Max, optimize the number of students and maximize the score.
Why can't we? Well, I think by focusing on passing rate, that's where we are looking at both of those things. But frankly, if all we wanted to do was get the highest mean score, you would be as selective as possible in who you allowed to take the AP course. So you would pick the-
Well, it looks like you are. You have 8% in your APs course, even though it's a freshman course, 8% of the class, AP Bio, 10% of the class, so I'm, I'm just doing the higher math, roughly, what, 100 students? And so it does seem selective. And I would invite you and your department to consider expanding that, in fact, undermining the selectivity goal, and really expanding the criteria, and also for our equitability goals, to get more students in. And if teachers are committed and doing their jobs, then passing, which is three out of five, is not going to be that daunting a goal. Distribution to four and five, maybe, but if we want to give kids the experience of a college freshman course, and the rigor of a college freshman course, then I think we need to reconstruct the criteria to get in the course, and then you'll see greater percentages of students enrolling.
Okay. So just to, so in terms of the criteria to select, so students, for the most part, select the course. So we've removed a lot of those barriers. So there's not, we're not turning away a lot of students. We're, we're certainly encouraging students who are doing really well, right? There are recommendations and things like that. But if a student's not recommended for AP, and they come and they say, gee, I really wanted to take AP Biology, for example, they're not receiving a no from us. They're receiving a, well, let's sit down and talk about what the course is like, and make sure that it meets your expectation, and is that really what you want to, are you ready to invest that type of time? So, one of the, one of the things that may, one of the things that we've done to open up access is, all of our AP Science courses are 10 credits. They occupy a block every day. And by doing that, we're able to remove prerequisites, because we're teaching that information within the context of the course, and at the same time, still making sure that it's not just a dump of knowledge, like many AP courses can be, right? Like, they can just be a lot of stuff very quickly. So that does inhibit some students from taking AP because they don't want to invest the, the 10 credits. And so that's, you know, maybe that's something to, that, that we could all talk about in committee. But that's really, I, I don't know that that goes against our goal as a district of helping students find their passion. And if their passion is not science, then maybe they shouldn't be spending two classes in their schedule in science, they should be taking art or music or something like that. I mean, that's, that's what I'd say, and we can, I'm certainly, you know, ready to, to talk more about that. And if you want to look at criteria and things like that, we could do that as well.
Yeah, I think if, if it's all right with the board that we move any additional questions sort of offline, and, and only because I want to make sure that we wrap up the rest of the report and get through our agenda tonight. So, but I do appreciate, Mr. Hall, everything you've given, thank you all.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, because I really see a lot of successes in what you presented. Really excited and encouraged about, when you talked about removing the gates, why, why do we have gates here? You know, I think that's a, a great way to put it, and creating more access for more students. So I really applaud your department, and I thank you, because it looks like you're more concerned with the students' experience than, you know, how many fives can we collect? And I just had a quick question about the, we saw some graphs, and where we saw strong support may be needed. We saw ELL learners there, and we have two ELL support teachers. Is, do you feel like that's adequate? Do you feel like we need more resources there?
So, I will say that the two folks that we have, the ELL paraprofessionals that we have, are phenomenal. And so they are a huge resource. The teachers who teach those courses are science teachers, and they receive, they receive a lot of support from Laura Arredondo, who's our World Language and ELL supervisor, and training. So they're, they are well-equipped to, to support those students. That is a population of students that is hard to sort of generalize, though, in terms of what their learning needs are, right? So we, certainly, language is a piece of that, and also, some of the students have disrupted learning experience, their schooling has been disrupted. So there's a lot of, of, of challenges in there that we have a, a wide team supporting that's maybe not reflected in that, counseling, you know, our SACS, you know, the, the ELL department and things like that. So that might be a little bit misleading that there's only two folks there. So certainly, that's a priority for us, that demographic. But I don't have the feeling that we're, like, we're trying to do it sort of without tools at this point.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, and just a, a last few updates for me, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Hughes. Couple of COVID thoughts tonight, and I speak tonight with some hope on where we are, as we've seen cases begin to decline this week. And we've always noted that our school mirrors the larger community experience and conditions in this pandemic, and, and this most recent surge was, was no exception at all, and has been no exception. You'll all recall, we, we talked about this last time, that our reopening plan this year has been tied to those weekly regional COVID reports, which assign our region a color coding. And as you know, we've been in red for some weeks here, and, and our plan on our website that I showed last time specifies a shortened in-person school day without lunch service, and also has us closing our facilities to outside users, you know, like recreation, sports in our communities and, and what have you, whenever we're in red. And, and those have been two of the most difficult steps we've had to take this school year, as we moved into red over the past few weeks. You've also heard me criticize those weekly state reports here in, in these meetings as not being timely enough. Remember, the data on those reports are lagged by about a week. And also, as not being local enough, because those reports include Somerset and Mercer Counties, not just Hunderdin County. I'm pleased to share that, that our partners at the Department of Health have been working with superintendents in our county to help us understand our local conditions in the moment a lot better than those reports have been able to give to us over the past 22 months. And that may allow us to understand whether or not we're in line with the rest of the region, doing better than the rest of the region at any given moment. I'm also really thankful for our partners, as I mentioned last time, at Hunderdin Healthcare, for keeping us up to date on conditions at the hospital and, and throughout the whole medical community here in the, in the county. In all of these conversations that I'm having with these folks, I see a real potential for us to return to full days when our local area looks ready in the data, and not necessarily waiting on the report of those three counties to go from red to orange. So if we see our region continuing in red in the report we received this Thursday, but the local partners are giving us the green light to move forward, we can adopt those orange-level practices. Now, I just, I just threw a lot of colors at you in that one sentence, but in short, it means that we could go back to full days with lunches, most likely for lunches, to start, and would also begin to reopen our facility to community users earlier rather than later. We'd be in the best position to do that on the Monday following those conversations, so we could see potentially, as soon as next Monday, getting back to a normal schedule with our facilities open. It's also possible, of course, that we need to spend another week or so on an early dismissal based on the community conditions, but we're seeing, like I said, hopeful signs this week. And I'll share a couple of numbers with you in just a minute. We do have to continue to follow those quarantine protocols, and I know that's been a large conversation for everyone in our community, it's been a conversation here as well with the board and, and in school, despite the fact that those, those protocols have shifted several times, and despite the fact that those protocols do have different outcomes for students who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. And there are several reasons to run through here really quickly why we follow those protocols. Some of this I shared last time, some of this we've shared in committee, some of this I've shared in correspondence with folks in the community and conversations. First is kind of a high-altitude thought, we're bound to reach a standard of care for our students. That's my duty. If we were to buck the protocols that we've received from the Department of Health, and something were to happen to one of our students or staff members, we would have failed to reach a standard of care. It's quite simple. We have seen severely ill children and, and adults in our community, and we have seen in neighboring communities, we've seen neighboring communities struggle through even more tragic outcomes as a result of, of the pandemic. So standard of care becomes very important to us in the analysis of this. Second, we've always been successful with Department of Health protocols, which have always, as I mentioned last time, always prescribed different outcomes for vaccinated and unvaccinated people over many years, and, and for many illnesses, not just through this particular pandemic. I don't say that we follow these protocols just because that's what we've always done, but because we do trust the expertise from which these protocols come to us. I am as tired of it as anyone is, though I know I have no monopoly over any frustration, no one has any monopoly over any frustration right now. Third, we do pledge to follow these procedures, these protocols, through the various things and obligations that we have to the Department of Education. When we accepted American Recovery Plan and other funding, for example, we pledged to implement these protocols. This is not a new or unique situation for schools. Those of you who work in schools know this, that funding follows our fulfillment of things like this all of the time. This is always how schools are held to rules and regulations. Now, folks have made a lot of the words recommendation and guidance and guidelines and such from the Department of Health, and I've explained here that the DOH does not have enforcement power. There aren't DOH police that come into schools or businesses to, to create compliance. Everything they publish comes to us as guidance or recommendation or guideline. Everything that they publish comes with those words. The reasons I listed earlier are just a few, though, why we, working through accountability and care in schools is, is much more complicated than those single words like guidelines and recommendations suggest, and why I continue to, to maintain that these are requirements for us rather than simply just guidelines. There are other reasons, you know, the Department of Education's Road Forward Plan, under which all of our planning proceeds, assumes that we engage in contact tracing, and, and around it all is your superintendent I work with, and, and value my friendship and partnership with, and respect my colleagues across all those different sectors with whom we work in, in public health and in, in medicine. We all work together to protect our community. It's, it's, you know, we're doing all we can to balance the many different things that we have to balance on the scale, particularly at this time, which requires a really exact balancing on the scale right now. And, you know, no approach is perfect, and I would never say that ours is, but I'm proud really to stand with all the folks who are working themselves to the point of exhaustion to do all that they can for kids here and out in the community. And to the extent, and to extend really what I said earlier, we as educators have no monopoly over frustration or exhaustion here, but I'm in a unique position to see that frustration and exhaustion in everyone who works here, and who puts the priorities of their work with these children ahead of their own needs. Now, students who are homesick, who are, or who are close contacts, have access to all of these people, teachers, counselors, vice principals, all these people that we've heard about and talked about tonight through wonderful presentations from these folks. Everyone, they have access to everyone. Teachers are inviting students into the classrooms through Zoom and Google Meet when that makes sense for the student and the lesson, and they're assigning alternative work when it doesn't make sense. That's a personalized approach that provides each student the tools that they need individually. I've heard some say that this is not aligned to our equity work, but that's a misunderstanding of definitions. That's exactly what equity means, that students receive the individualized attention and tools that they need. And I'll continue to pursue that as long as the scale of this illness allows. Now, regarding the scale, at previous meetings, I've shared some numbers with you. I can expand a bit here. Before winter break, we peaked at about just over 300 students who were out on quarantine as close contacts or who were ill with COVID-19. It was just over 300. That remains about over 250 the week after break, so we were still seeing very high numbers of absence. It goes up and down from there to today, but we were at just under 40 students this morning who were out as a result of either being ill with COVID or quarantined as a close contact. So we're back down to some small numbers. We need to see that hold over the next several days to begin to make some decisions about next week with the Department of Health. We're dealing now with shorter quarantine timelines, that's certainly helping. And though we are worried that some shifts in quarantine are going to cause those numbers to go up again, we do have, from the Department of Health, a change in the quarantine guidance that's going to require folks to be not just fully vaccinated with two doses, but also boosted in order to avoid quarantine. And that includes our students who are currently able to avoid that requirement under the, the existing regulations right now. Those new practices will go into effect on February 1st, and we'll be doing some communication about that this week to make everyone aware. But if the current trend continues, illness will decline overall, and we'll be heading into a much more hopeful spring, heading into a, a much more normal era to recapture here on campus, and hopefully heading into, as soon as next week, a return to full-day schedules with lunch service. And, you know, your continued support as a board and, and all of the work of folks here has been instrumental in, in making sure that we continue to offer as much as we possibly can, from extracurriculars to in-person instruction, with no, no significantly long delays to remote instruction like other schools have, have experienced. So, on the agenda, a few additional accolades, Students of the Month. So, on the agenda, a few additional accolades, Students of the Month, Student All-Stars, who we honor on the agenda here. I want to remind everyone also that Central alum and speed skater Kimmy Getz is going to be competing in the Olympics next month, very soon. We can't wait to see her. We were involved in sending her Letters of Love. That's what it was called, right? It was Letters of Love. And we'll be taking other steps to make sure she knows exactly how proud we are in the coming weeks. I also want to point out that this is School Board Appreciation Month. There's a motion on the agenda to honor all of you. And I know you're all humble folks, and I know it'll be difficult for you all to vote on this, but please take it on the agenda as my and one of our schools' most certain recommendations here, to honor you and your service and your volunteerism. Vote on it for one another if that helps you tonight. You're a wonderful, smart, and, most importantly, caring group of folks. And the biggest thing that an educator can say to any other educator, or to anyone, really, is that you're a true model for our students and each and every one of you. So I thank you for that. Couple other quick organizational items on the agenda. Let me just move ahead there. We have calendar revision to account for snow days and early dismissals. We have school officials being appointed here. Mr. Estrada mentioned additional anti-bullying specialists being trained. They're being named here, Mrs. Buckaloo and Mrs. Hoff. And then, of course, the motion recognizing your service as members of the board. And with that, Mrs. Hughes, that concludes my report tonight with everybody's thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thanks.
Should we move those two? Move them after. Okay. So we'll move those two items after our first public comment. Thank you, Dr. Moore. So this is the first public comment section for items on the agenda only, action items on the agenda only. There will be a second opportunity to speak for the public, for general comments at the end, once we get through our committee reports. So, seeing nobody coming up. Do you have an item on the agenda, Mr. Fish?
We just discussed COVID stuff, and we just heard a whole report on HIB, which included bullying and our school being equal to all students. So I think everything I'm going to cover falls in those guidelines.
Thank you. Specifically, if you look at the agenda, it's for action items, and Dr. Moore's report is not an action item to be voted on tonight. So that's what this first residence forum is for.
So can you explain, what are our choices under the items?
Action items. So anything that you see on the agenda that is a motion that the board has to move on and vote on is an action item to be discussed at this first public forum.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion, please? The first one is for, to approve the resolution for School Board Association Month. Do I need to read that whole thing?
No.
No, thank you. Good. I appreciate that. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the following resolution as laid out in the agenda for New Jersey School Board Association Appreciation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. Now, we need a motion in a second to approve the calendar revision. Dr. Moore just referenced when we had our emergency school closing day due to weather, which is now bumping our last day of first semester, first day of second semester by a day. So can I have a motion in a second on that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And, Dr. Moore, it looks like there's one more motion under organizational before we get to committees.
Yeah.
Two new anti-bullying specialists being appointed?
Yep.
Alexandra Buckaloo and Michelle Hoff. Can I have a motion in a second to approve those two folks as school officials?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Can I have an update, Mr. Richard, from Student Life and Program?
Yes, there are four items for us to consider tonight. The first item deals with tuition and transportation for an out-of-district student, special ed. Ms. Cangelosi-Hay provided information about the revision to the student's tuition agreement. Tuition has increased because there's a need for additional services as per the student's IEP. The second item concerns itself with ELL program, three-year plan. Ms. Cangelosi-Hay reviewed the district's submissions to the ELL program's three-year plan. This is required by the New Jersey Department of Education, and it had been delayed due to the pandemic, and the state released a new format for the report in December. The plan includes additional data pertaining to graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, and math and ELA progress indicators for both English language learners and former English language learners. The Language Instructional Educational Program, LIEP Committee, will continue to meet and review the data along with other pertinent data and programmatic information. And this plan will be submitted to NJDOE after board approval. Item number three concerns itself with two students applying for early graduation. The committee looked at these two, and they're fine in terms of meeting all the criteria. And we also discussed the early graduation process. Lastly, item four concerns itself with a new club, Central Broadcasting Club. Mr. Brand presented information to the committee for approval of a new club. He explained that this club could work and interact with students differently than the current television program and the radio program. The committee discussed the benefits of this club in reaching more students to make broadcasting more accessible. And Ms. Cangelosi-Hay provided more information on the revision and expansion of the broadcasting programs, both TV and radio, and this will be a multi-year process. So with that, I'd like to move H1 through H4 for approval tonight.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion about those items? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Operations and Transportation Committee, Mr. Nickel, can we have an update, please?
Yes. Operations and Transportation met in person on Tuesday, January 18. We went over some summer construction projects. Also had a chance to meet with the accountants who did our auditing, and once again, found no findings or recommendations for changes that we need to make. Few items on the agenda I just want to go through. Looking to approve an agreement with the Warren County Special Services School District for contracted student transportation for the 2223 school year. We have some monies that we are returning to both the Maintenance Reserve and Capital Reserve Funds. We're accepting a donation of an iPhone from Lauren Calvosa for use in the district, and also looking to apply for Unified Basketball Grant from School Based Counseling in the amount of $750. With that, I would like to move items I1 through I9.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion about the ONT committee Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes, except I need to abstain from I7, the IMC reconfiguration money's going back.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Mr. Davidson.
Yes, we have 14 items for action tonight. First one is two retirements, Lynn Sheard, who's been with us 18 years, and Michael Vitale, who's been 25 years with the district, and we wish them well. The next item is we're approving a new, set of new job descriptions. And the following item, we are also abolishing some descriptions, some jobs. And I'd like to ask Dr. Moore to increase our understanding of the purpose and what we're doing here.
Yeah. So, Mr. Davidson, why don't you complete your report? I'll do that during the discussion portion. Thanks.
Okay. So, we're approving three new job positions. They're, they're going to be in the business office, and, and we're abolishing some job descriptions in the personnel office. The rest of the items in the report include a number of appointments, athletic worker appointments, some internships, and then additional items, professional development, leaves of absence, counseling. And the final, the final, the final item is a Counseling Policy Committee appointment. And this is particularly interesting is because the board has seen fit to establishing a policy committee which will recommend policy pertaining to counseling. And there are five people that will be appointed in that, in this action tonight. So with this, I move the items P1 through 14.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on any of these items?
Yeah, I'll just share a couple of thoughts. The, the job descriptions, the new job descriptions, and then the abolishment of those existing positions, one from the HR office and two existing positions in the business office. I have to thank Ms. Spitzer and all the work that her office did with Shonda Williams in the business, I'm sorry, in the HR office and in conversation with me to kind of help modernize the layout of the duties in the business office and streamline some payroll-facing duties that were going on in the HR office. So with this change, not only do we see a more elegant structure that allows us to handle all of the business office functions and payroll functions under one roof, but we also realize a decent amount of savings. Anywhere, I would say averaging in the different models, Ms. Spitzer, let's say about 15,000 or so in that neighborhood, depending on how we count the breakage across those different things. So we've got some work to do to fill those positions with your approval tonight. But as I shared in my updates to you this weekend, we're excited about the opportunity to bring a, kind of a better center of gravity to some of those duties between those two offices. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Okay. Is there any other discussion on those personnel items? Hearing none. We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes, and congratulations to the retirees.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And, Mrs. O'Donnell, do you have a report from the Racism Equity and Diversity Committee?
Yes, just a brief update. Firstly, I would like to thank the board for approving the committee to move to a standing status. I think that's a really important step for us. So I really, I thank everybody for voting for that. And then briefly, the committee met virtually on January 19 at 1:00 and discussed several updates and projects. Dr. Moore shared that staff committees were prepared to move forward with the Racism Equity and Diversity Committee on two projects: learning about and drafting an equity policy in order to fulfill a board goal for this school year, and gathering data and drawing up a specification for a comprehensive equity audit for the district. Dr. Moore also shared that Mr. Brandt has gathered a committee for measuring climate and culture, especially as it relates to equity and diversity concerns towards fulfillment of a school goal for this year. And lastly, the committee, we discussed various aspects of an equity, equity policy, and brainstormed ideas for drafting an equity policy that included timetables for reporting, district structures, and positions to stay accountable to equity goals, and also provisions in policy for regular reexamination of data, assumptions, and ideas. So that's what we covered. We don't have anything to move as of yet. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Donnell. With that, we'll move on to additional board business. Does any other board member have any items they'd like to discuss? Nope. Okay, hearing none. We're moving on to our second residence forum. Mr. Fish, you're welcome to return to the mic. Anyone else? Just a reminder that each speaker has a maximum of five minutes for a total of 30 minutes for our second residence forum. Could you just please sign in, Mr. Fish?
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience. I'm waiting for the second form.
No problem. That doesn't count against my five minutes, so does it? All right. One second here. Okay. So, where am I at? Oop, my glasses. So, thanks for the presentation on the HIB report. That was pretty informative. And one thing I want to hit home on is that we cannot continue to discriminate between vaxxed and unvaxxed kids. So. I, I am clearly no, claiming to be no expert in one thing, let alone two things. I don't have a doctor in front of my name. But what I can do is do some research on my own. And what we're pretty much here to say is, let me put a couple of things in perspective to you. So, John Hopkins University, August 2, 2021, I have a report right here. Vaccinated people infected with the Delta variant can carry detectable viral loads similar to those people that are unvaccinated. So that's John Hopkins University, and that's December 10. Oh, not December 10. I said August 2, 2021. Another report here, well documented. Western Journal, which one's this one? Western Journal, December 10. CDC announces 79% of all U.S. Omicron cases have occurred in vaccinated individuals. Another case here. So, NPR, this is an article in NPR, December 31. So, in late November, more than 110 people gathered in crowded Christmas party at a restaurant in Norway. Most of the guests were fully vaccinated. One had returned from South Africa just a few days earlier, was unknowingly carrying the Omicron. Ultimately, 70% of the partygoers were infected. Last one. What do I got here? CDC, volume 28, number one, January this month. So, multi-state outbreak of infection, including vaccinated vaccine breakthrough infections. That's right from the CDC website. All right? In here specifically, there was a case in Massachusetts, and during July 3 through to 17, thousands of visitors from across the United States traveled to Providence Town and participated in a large densely packed indoor and outdoor gatherings marketed to adult male participants. And of course, among the 1,128 clustered associate primary and secondary cases, were identified 81% vaccine breakthrough cases. So, one question I have to the board. Supposedly, we have a board-appointed physician. This was brought up to me, I believe, by Dr. Moore. So who is our board-appointed physician? If we have a board-appointed physician, where are they? It would be great, as a board, to listen to us, the people, and maybe that person, that's a professional, in something that not everyone's an expert in. Why can't that person come and explain to me? Why can't that person come and explain to me how someone who's close contact traced, that's vaccinated, is allowed back in school the next day when I can go, and I can go on and on with every one of these reports? So you tell me, seriously, how are you allowing, how do you sleep at night knowing that you're going to have...
Mr. Fish, please, can you please address the board? Please address the board.
Yeah, I'm addressing the board. I'm talking to everybody up here, but specifically you here...
Well, you're directing your attention and your hand motions to Dr. Moore.
Let's not nitpick and get into my five minutes, please. Thank you.
I'm, please, I'm just reminding you to address the board.
I'm addressing you. I'm talking out loud.
Thank you.
And in the board up here is Dr. Moore as well. So, so here, furthermore, so you said in an email to me, one second here, going through. Ah, where's my other report? Hold on. Here we go. I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
Promise. Got too many papers. I lost my article. Anyways, the NJDOH is indeed a recommendation, and it is just that, as you admitted in your email to me, I will trace that back. If you are going to represent a minimum standard, because that's what you defined it at in your email, that you are going to follow a minimum standard, then in that case, why is Hunter and Central Regional High School, why are we just going to do the minimum? What I'm asking you to do is vaccinated kids should have the same quarantine as unvaccinated in regards to the close contact. Why not go a step and above? And why just follow a minimum standard if that's what you are doing then?
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
All right? Without taking this instance, you are personally risking the health of others and putting them right back into the population, which is going to escalate your numbers up from where they currently are. The next question that I want to...
Mr. Fish, your five minutes is up, and there's a lot of people here tonight, and it wouldn't be fair to them to... Is there anybody else who has any comments that they'd like to make tonight? Okay. Can you please come up to the mic and state your name and municipality for the record
Good evening. Melissa Gardner, Flemington.
Thank you. Mrs. Gardner, can you just sign in, please?
There's, I don't know where it is. There's nothing here. Is it hiding? There's nothing. There isn't. No. There's no paper up there. Oh, found it. There you go. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, so I came here tonight to actually just hear about updates to the COVID policy. I spoke at the last meeting regarding my feelings about the punishment of unvaxxed children and the 10-day quarantine, which has affected both of my children here multiple times, where they've sat home with no instruction. It's absolutely deplorable. All they get is from four to six of online teaching with one teacher per subject. Not their teacher, but I spoke about that the last time, and I'm still extremely upset about all of that. And also, my dislike of the masks that we know that don't work and that are suffocating my children seven hours, five days a week. We know the masks don't work. The CDC even said they don't work. Every mask on your face is not working. It is, it is absolutely deplorable, and it makes me sick that my two kids sit here seven hours a day, well, eventually they will, wearing these things. But the reason I'm here, because I already discussed this at the last meeting, is today I decided to check in with my son about the CRT policy here. And to my surprise, he said that, yes, his teacher occasionally brings out the power wheel in discussions. So I am here again. If you remember, I spoke about this subject back in April. As a side note, my son adores his teacher. However, the fact that he's bringing out this power wheel, which, I have a picture of the power wheel that I was supplied by a teacher that I spoke about back in April. And I want to just say a little bit, remind people of back in April, I was given a letter from an anonymous teacher, and I read it then, and I'm going to read it again now. This is from a teacher at Hunter and Central about the CRT training. This is a part. "All law enforcement officers and the belief that if we support law enforcement, that is evidence of our inherent racism and white privilege. Prior to the first day of training, we were encouraged to watch a video that our trainer posted on her company website. In this video, our trainer declares, 'There are people everywhere experiencing racism through law enforcement that never make the media. It's built into the system. It's not just that there are bad apples, it's that the whole orchard is bad. It's built on white supremacy. Many of us have family, friends, and neighbors who proudly serve and protect our community. All of us rely on our dedicated school resource officers to protect us and our students. We are trained in our school safety drills to hide and cover and wait for law enforcement officers to respond in a crisis. The belief that our trainer espouses that the whole orchard is bad is absolutely offensive.' That is just a very tiny part of what I had said back in April." So I emailed the history teacher regarding what was said, and apparently some things regarding police officers target black citizens, that SATs are racist. Now, this is coming from my son and from what he was told by his teacher. And that white people are powerful. And I've said it back in April, my father was a police officer. And all of this type of discussion about basing characterization on the color of skin, it disgusted me then, it disgusts me now. So when I sent an email to the teacher with my obviously feelings of disgust, the response was, "The state of New Jersey, through curriculum standards and through other specific laws and mandates, requires us to educate students on specific forms of racism and bias and to equip our students to fight against such things." And then there was a link that was given to me about diversity, equity, racism. And I have to say that again, and I said this in April, I don't understand how judging people on the color of their skin is seen as a good thing. Since when is that what we're supposed to do? We're not supposed to do that. We're not supposed to be judging people on the color of their skin. I don't understand how the tables have turned. It's wrong. I don't care what anybody says. It's wrong. And this is the power wheel, if anybody wants to see it. This is from the training that our staff was taught. Thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Moore. My name's Christopher Howell. My wife is Jennifer Howell. I have four kids. I have two that go to this school, and I have two that go to RMS, right next door. I've never spoke before the board here. You don't know who I am. I've never spoke before any board until last week. I went to the Reddington School District Board, spoke to Dr. Hart and the board members there, and what we were asking is some of the same things we're asking here, a little different. I have two kids that go there, that go to school full day, that they didn't have their extracurricular activities. They go to lunch, they have a whole day. Here, I got two students that go only half-day, but they have extracurricular activities. So we asked Dr. Hart and the board to reinstate extracurricular activities. And in order to convince them, I told them to look at not just the direct evidence, I told them to look at something else, something anecdotal, anecdotal evidence. And you may not know what that is. That's life experiences of people compiling it all together and analyzing it. And what I asked the community there, and I've been instructed today not to do that here, and I don't need to do it, because I already found out. What I found out is when I asked the board and the community here, do they know anybody, any child who's gotten COVID and went with serious illness to the hospital? I asked them to raise their hand, and you know how many people raised their hand? None. I asked the question, God forbid, do you know any child that's died from COVID? And that's not just your children, it's your, you know, friends, family, anybody. And everybody knows at least 10 children. There were 50 people in the room, just like tonight. And you know how many people raised their hand? None. So I asked the board, I asked Dr. Moore tonight, to consider the same thing that Dr. Hart did and the board last weekday, because we got a win last week. You know, I don't think everybody stands up here every week, or every, you know, every month. I don't think you guys are listening. All you're doing is going on the data. I had a meeting today, one-on-one with Dr. Moore and my wife. I've been told that's actually something pretty special. That doesn't happen too often. And the thing I got out of that meeting was, you guys are all data-driven. You look at the numbers, that's it. You don't look at the anecdotal evidence. You look at red, orange, and the trending numbers, whether they're going up or down. Well, what does it matter if nobody's going to the hospital and nobody's dying? We're not here as a board, right, to control what goes on outside the school. All you're here is to control what you can do in this school for our students, our children. Our children leave this school, they go play in sports, they go to activities, they go to football games, they do all these things. You can't worry about that. All you can worry about is what you can control here in this school. And I don't think anybody's looking at that, you know, at the evidence of what's in front of you. I, the other takeaway I got from my meeting today with Dr. Moore was, "I've made promises," he said. To who? And we heard it tonight. I made promises that we need to follow these guidelines, even though they're only guidelines or actually requirements. And what I'm talking about is the quarantine guidelines that have already been mentioned. We're asking the board not to follow any quarantine guidelines. And the reason is, I got back, the reason I was telling, well, we don't follow, oh, we're not going to get our funding. So just like Dr. Hart and the board last week, they led last week, and they did something big. They brought back extracurricular activities. That's all we got. We didn't get them to change the quarantine yet, but we got those extracurricular, they started today. And my son had a wrestling match today, and he rolled around with a bunch of other kids on a mat with no mask, nothing. So today, tonight, I ask you, board, to lead, to do something brave, to not follow the numbers anymore, and do what's right for our kids. And I'm going to give you an example. And I think if you don't have the courage to lead, then follow other school districts, because it's coming. It's coming.
Thank you.
Okay, I need one more minute. It's coming. You've seen the Supreme Court talk and rule on the 100-person mandate, or the, taking away the mandate for the vaccines for employers that have 100 employees or more, right? We saw that about two weeks ago. We saw the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania take away the mask mandate in that state on December 10th. One hour ago, we saw New York State Supreme Court take away the mask mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Mr. Howell, thank you for your time.
So do you want to lead?
Mr. Howell, thank you for your time.
Or do you want to follow? One more thing I got, man.
Mr. Howell, you've gone over your five minutes.
All right. I got one more minute.
Thank you for your time. There's other people who would like to speak.
I got one more minute. Do I got one more minute? I got one more minute. Dr. Hart, you raised today that you thought...
Mr. Howell, your time is up, and I've asked you not to address Dr. Moore, you're addressing the board. If there's a communication you'd like to make with Dr. Moore, please do so in writing. Your time is up, there are other people who would like to speak. Thank you for your time, Mr. Howell. You cannot cede your time to another speaker. No, you can't. Thank you.
Okay, all right. My name is Carol Prignoli, and I'm giving him my time.
You cannot do that. Thank you, Ms. Prignoli, but you're not able to do that under the rules. Thank you.
I just want to remind the board that there's a school district in this state that is not following the protocols for contact tracing and the quarantine, and that's the township of Milltown.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Howell. We appreciate... Mr. Howell, I'm going to have to shut down the meeting. I don't want to do it again. Please be respectful of the other speakers who have come here to also express their opinions. I have given you latitude beyond the five minutes. All I ask is that everyone follow the rules. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak?
I'm from Reddington Township. Members of the board, Dr. Moore, thank you for allowing me to speak today. What I want to talk about is a little bit what everyone's been saying a little earlier, and it's about choices. Choices that we make for our students, for our children, and that the board makes. And specifically, everyone in this room, whether it be the board, the parents, administrators, want to do what's best for their children. So obviously, what's best for their children is having a full-day schedule, not a half-day. So as we discussed in multiple meetings, and as Dr. Moore talked about earlier, currently we're in a red status based on the number of cases. And obviously, that may change in about a week or so, because, you know, oh, thank God, it's getting better, the Omicron cases, but there could be another variant. A month from now, we can have another one, then we go back to red status. So it is kind of important that the choices that the board makes and how they affect our students. Specifically, and this was discussed by some of my fellow colleagues here, that Somerville High School, Bridgewater High School, North Hunterdon High School, Coolsborough, and all the schools, all the schools around us had full day. They chose that. Hunter and Central chose not to. Now, I know you guys have mentioned, oh, our safety reopen plan is red, we must go half-day. But you guys wrote the safety reopen plan. I've read the safety reopen plans of all those other schools, and they didn't have it. Only Hunter and Central did. You guys wrote it, you chose to do it. You could choose not to do half-days. You chose. Once again, you could change your mind and do as all your colleagues do, and don't do half-days, because it really, really hurts the children and the students. The next thing I just wanted to talk about, contract tracing, we've talked about this a few times, and I went to all the, went to Department of Health, I went to all the high schools around here, and they all, including Hunter and Central, you all define it the same way. And I'm going to just read from your website. For students, the close contact is defined as being within three feet of an ill person for a period of longer than 15 minutes over a 24-hour period if they are masked. If they're unmasked, the distance goes to six feet. So my questions here are, Hunter and Central has a safe distance and masking policy for all students. So by definition, if a student is in this building within Hunter and Central, it's impossible for them to be in close contact unless Hunter and Central is not following their own policies. So obviously, you guys are making sure they're staying within three feet. You're obviously ensuring you're making their, wear their mask. So it is impossible to be close contact when you're in this building. So the only place you could be close contacted is outside this building, whether it be on a school bus, at lunch, or at sports. whether it be on a school bus, at lunch, or at sports. We're not having lunches. You're closing half-days. So that knocks that out. So the question then is, you had 300 people contract-traced, I think Dr. Moore said a little while ago. Where were they contract-traced? How were they? Were they all on the school bus? Were they all in athletics? Or is it being done within the classroom, which it really shouldn't be by definition of your policies? So what I would like you to do, if you're able to after this session, explain how you contract-trace students, because it shouldn't be. And another thing is, in relation to that, I was talking to a couple of parents in the, in the room. And two of their children do not want to go on school buses. You ask them why? The parents drive them, because they don't want to be contract-traced, because that's one of the few places you could be contract-traced. It can't be at lunch. It can't be in the classroom. So it has to be on the school bus. It's sad when kids don't want to go on a school bus because they're afraid the school's going to crack down on them. The last thing I wanted to bring up is in regards to remote learning. As you know, this brought up a few times. Dr. Moore mentioned that the students can request it, and they have to do it. Dr. Moore wrote a letter to Wayne earlier today, which I read, where, I'm going to just quote it, "Kids need to reach out to the teacher." Okay. Why do kids need to reach out to the teacher? Just set up the Zoom link. Just set up the Chrome link. These kids have enough on their plate. They have to wear masks all day. And we all know masks don't do anything. But yeah, the government mandates it. Okay, we have to do it. But outside of that, why do they have to request it? It's not up to them. They got enough on their plate. North Hunterdon, to use them as an example, they don't have to request it. They get that Zoom link set up every day automatically. Clinton Township Schools, that Zoom link is set up every day. It's not requested. So my question to you, that comes down to another choice. You have a choice. Do what's good for the children. Full day, they don't have to do that. The Zoom link, set it up. It's your choice. You chose not to do it. Choose to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizza.
Hello, my name is Erica Costantini. I have four kids in the district, two who graduated during the pandemic last year and the year before. I have a junior daughter here and one at RMS. Right before vacation break started, she was contact-traced. Because she's unvaccinated, she had to stay home for a longer period of time with the two hours of virtual from four to six at night. During that time, my husband and I emailed Dr. Moore. He did respond to us, but pushed us off to Dr. Brandt. Said, "If you have any further questions, I'm following the guidelines of the Board of Health. This is what I'm doing." We emailed Dr. Brandt, and we said, "Please, can you help us with this?" Our daughter was struggling. She was missing chemistry, calculus, anatomy, and physiology. Reached out to her teachers, where she had three tests during that quarantine time that was not allowed to be do, done at-home virtual. Was told that she needs to do it when she comes back to school, which she was able to come back shortly after break. Then we went to half-a-day. She now has three zeros, because they don't offer tutorial on half-days at school. Three zeros in three major classes. She's a junior, preparing to try and go away to college soon. If you guys look on page 13 of the newjersey.gov, if children are sent home due to COVID or being quarantined due to contact tracing, it is by law, you provide an equivalent education virtually, by law. And you are failing our children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And thank you for never emailing me back, Dr. Brandt, whoever you are.
Hi. My name is Debbie Tyler. I have two students here at Hunter and Central. Last week, I did have the pleasure of talking to Dr. Moore and Mr. Brandt. They were both very kind, considerate, and open to discussing my concerns. I do appreciate their time. But unfortunately, I think their hands are tied by the fact that Central received funding from federal and state government in return for following New Jersey Department of Health and CDC guidelines. Hence, they're no longer really guidelines. They're now requirements. But there is some wiggle room, I found out. When Central put out guidelines that students 18-plus need to be boosted are considered unvaccinated, North Hunterdon put out guidelines that stated the CDC and NJDOH are making the distinction between 18 and older and five to 17-year-olds in their recommendations. We are treating all students the same, so booster shots are not required. Now, I know since then, the regulations are changing, coming forward. But at that point, they chose not to follow the guidelines, yet they are another public school who has accepted the same funding. My point is, there is some discretion on the board and the super, that the superintendent have. At the last board meeting, when Dr. Moore discussed listening to experts, I sent him the CHOP guidelines, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. For those of you who do not know, they're the number-one children's hospital in the area. They're actually the number-two in the United States. So I feel that they would be the experts on children's health, the number-one hospital in the area. The experts on children's health do not align with the experts here at Central. I'd like to share a little bit of it, but I'd be happy to send you the guidelines. It says, "With the evidence that COVID-19 is becoming a milder infection in most children, and at the time when adults and youth in K-12 settings have been offered vaccination, Children's Hospital Philadelphia support in-person education, even at times a significant, significant community transmission, and propose new guidelines that, and this is the key, reduces excessive burden to school staff and families." Now, I'm not going to read all the guidelines. Like I said, I'd be happy to share them with you, and you can find them online very easily. But they do not differentiate between vaccinated and unvaccinated, except when it comes to exposure of a household member. Now, there's three other people in my household. The likelihood of my kid being contact-traced from a household member, who, by the way, we've all had COVID, so that would be slim to none versus 4,000-plus staff and children at Central. That's why I'm here. I've known 75 people with COVID in the last month. 74 have been vaccinated. Why are we still discriminating against unvaccinated kids? I would like to remind you that there are kids here with medical issues that prevent them from being vaccinated, with deeply-held religious beliefs that have been going on long before COVID, yet they are being discriminated against. Now, when you quarantine these kids, you automatically tell the student body and the staff that they are unvaccinated. And they're starting to be harassed, bullied, and intimidated. And it needs to stop, because there's no reason for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. So that'll wrap up our second public session. We've reached 30 minutes. Before we go into executive session, we'll see if any of the board members or Dr. Moore has any comments. I would just like to make one comment in response to Ms. Costantini about tutorial. One thing just that I know to be true, there is tutorial on half-days. As a matter of fact, there are almost two sections of it. There is a period of time where the teachers can meet with the students when they get home from school until the end of the day. And then there is traditional tutorial that the students can set up virtually with their teachers. Is that correct, Dr. Moore? Yes. So I just wanted to make that comment with, just to, with regard to tutorial. Is there any other board member who'd like to make a statement or respond?
Just want to answer one question that came up in, in public record in our board agenda. The board approves the district physician each year. Our district physician is Dr. Elizabeth Raleigh. And she consults with us on a daily basis in, and is, you know, in, invaluable partner as, as we implement these, these and other protocols. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments? Anything to add? Okay. So with that, we are going to move into executive session to discuss some HIDs. No action upon return? Okay. I'd like to move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.